Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I am Shannon Hamilton. I'm here, I'm the executive director with the Central Texas Water Coalition. I've been here almost two years now and I really appreciate y'all coming. I'm probably gonna be a lot less nervous than last year, except now I've gotta speak in front of Dr. Robert Mace. So my nerves may be a little raised, so just forgive me if I get a little shaky. Last night at midnight, it hit me. One of the people I admire most in water is here, and I'm gonna be speaking before him, and that's nerve-wracking. But here we go. So, um, thank you for coming. We have several elected officials here. If you could raise your hands. Year one Commissioner Dockery's here. County Commissioner Shay's Travis County Commissioner Shay, Burnet County Commissioner, um, Joe Don Dockery, and Williamson County Commissioner Terry Cook. Judge Oakley, I hear back there at the bar. Several of the CTWC board members are here. Please raise your hands. They're here to answer any questions. We've got Frank Cooley here, Dave Lindsey, our president, Tom Harrison, Dave Stouch, Michael Paul. There's lots of people here that can answer your questions. So thank you so much for coming. We also have, did L R E Water make it? Couple, there we are. So our hydrology team, we are all about science and data. And L R E Water, that is our hydrologist that helps support us and make sure our data's right. And then we also have Cindy Smiley from Smiley Law Firm, our attorney, our water, the best water attorney here with us tonight. So we can answer a lot of questions. So, uh, we're very grateful to have y'all here and thank you for being patient while we dealt with the traffic. So, um, this is the quote I always like to start with. Texas is a land consistently dri- uh, sorry. A land of consistent drought and frequently interrupted by periods of flood. It was actually corrected one time, biblical floods. We know what biblical floods look like. And we haven't had one in a while. But, but in reality, the last one was only five years ago, but it feels like a lot longer, right? It's been a while since our lakes were full and looked that beautiful. So a little bit of history about CTWC. Um, we were formed in 2012 by a group that was part of the advisory council. They came together and decided that we needed an advocacy group to protect our lakes. And four people, five people in a room, decided to create this wonderful organization that 12 years later is still advocating for the rights of our water. Um, some of the things that we've been able to do through the years, one of the big ones was end open supply. So during the drought of record, the 2008, 2015, if you were here during that time, then you know things got bad. And, and prior to 2012, I believe, rice farmers could call for water and get as much water as they wanted. And that was one of the big things that we realized was a problem, that we needed to put triggers in place. So the next thing that came was getting those triggers added into the water management plan. And that is why we have as much water as we have today. Because rice farmers, other than one, other ag down basin hasn't received any water since 2022. And that's because of those triggers that were put in place. We are still in extraordinary drought. Um, we are one of the stakeholder groups. We will be at the table with LCRA for the water management plan that opens in March, and we are getting prepared for that. And that is critical. That is one of the biggest things that we can do for short-term planning. We're also working on long-term plans. Uh, but we have emerged as a strong stakeholder group, and we are here for the community. We are one of the only organizations that are trying to protect the Highland Lakes. And some of the things that we're focused on in 2024 is the water management plan. Um, we are, we are getting prepared. It is going to be a lot of data, and we're gonna talk about why. Uh, we're working on understanding the low inflows. We're gonna talk about that. Um, how do we deal with this growth? I think that's the question I get the most. What are we doing about the growth? Um, we're trying to, to at least make sure we have water going forward in the future. And in that, looking for laws and legislation. Until new water supply comes online, things have to change. And we're advocating for those things and writing those bills with our beautiful attorney. Um, we're very concerned about overselling of our water and want to introduce a protected reserve so that will get us through during times of drought. And it's called a safe yield, if anybody wants to get further into that. Um, but we're working on conservation efforts. Three of our four bills that we'll talk about later are centered around conservation. We need to buy time. If we get new, new water coming, which we've heard through Senator Perry, that that's a big goal, but we, that is 10 years in the future. That's, oh, that's further down the road than what we need right now. Um, and we're educating the public. We work with our elected officials to make sure they understand the state of the water and what we're doing to protect it. And we have support from many of the counties and cities to do that. So with that, I want to take a moment to introduce our guest speaker, Robert Mace. He is currently the executive director and chief water policy officer at the Meadow Center at Texas State. Um, he's head of the environment and a professor of practice in the Department of Geography and Environmental Studies. He, before that, he was with Texas Water Development Board for 18 years. And while on the board, he worked on understanding groundwater and surface water resources in Texas and advancing water conservation with innovative water technologies such as desalinization, aquifer storage and recovery, reuse, rainwater harvesting, regional and state water planning, and protecting Texans from floods. We all thought we were gonna get a flood with El Nino, and we didn't. But, that's okay. But we're gonna buy time. So, um, we are grateful to have Dr. Mace here with us. And with that, I'd like to invite you up, and I'm gonna give him the mic, and then we'll talk later.
Thank you so much. So I gotta put myself on a timer. I'm part professor these days, and so it's hard to shut me up. Talking about one of my favorite topics, which is, which is water. Um, when, when y'all asked for a title, I was thinking, oh, what's a clever title I could do? And I thought, well, this is, this is a good one. We'll Know the Worth of Water When the Lakes Run Dry. A little provocative, of course. That ties back supposedly to Benjamin Franklin. We'll Know the Worth of Water When the Well Runs Dry. Um, but it's the same sentiment. Um, you know, too many people take water for granted. Not y'all. You all know the importance of water. Anybody, at least hopefully, anybody that looks out the window would see that this is alarming and takes water for granted. However, even that's not guaranteed. During the drought of what's currently the drought of record, the drought from what, 2008 to 2015, there was a survey of Austinites on where does your water come from? And something like 70% of Austinites said it came from Barton Springs. Which is, which is, you know, I mean, pardon me, it was happy because usually people say, well, it comes from the faucet. So at least I didn't say that. But, but, you know, those same folks that probably come out here to the oasis and enjoy a margarita and the sunset, we're like, boy, the lake looks low. That sucks for boating. Actually, that sucks for water supply and a lot of other things as well, as you know too well. Um, I love this, this old historic photo. Uh, this is Emory Hughes straddling the Colorado River right, right where Tom Miller Dam is today. I just put this up here as a reminder that, you know, this is a land, as was mentioned, this is a land of floods and droughts. You know, severe floods and severe droughts. And we've seen these in the past. You know, we have a record that starts about 1895 in terms of measurements, what's going on with the river, um, what's going on with, with temperature and rainfall. But tree rings show that we've also had pretty severe droughts. And in fact, droughts worse than the drought of record going on in the past. So there's, there's this ever-present risk of us experiencing a drought worse than, than we've ever seen during a relatively limited record that we actually have data for. Um, y'all, y'all live this and know this all too well. I gotta watch where I'm standing. If I, if I'd known, I'd been up on a pedestal and I'd shaved my nostrils for y'all. Um, but this is, uh, Lake Travis, 1945 on your left, a couple days ago on your right. And you see the drought of the 50s over there on the left. Um, you see a drought in the mid 60s. You don't hear people talk much about, but that was actually kind of a doozy across the whole state. And then here's the drought of record, and then what's happened recently. And, uh, and so the fact that we've got a new drought of record is also a reminder that the drought of record isn't a thing in concrete. Um, there's, there's this, in concrete, there's like this concreting where if you plan for something, you kind of identify, this is what we're gonna plan for, and we're gonna plan for that. And you feel like your, our problems are all solved. Um, but the reality is, is there's, there's always a risk of something worse happening. It's like Murphy's Law, right? Things can always get worse. Um, and it's certainly true with weather, with climate, with inflows to the reservoirs. Um, we, although this recent drought doesn't look as bad as the one from 2008 to 2015, and part of me is wondering, because there was some pretty big changes to the water management plan that came out of that recent drought. And so, yeah, to me, um, you know, it could be this drought we're in now, could be even a new drought of record. We'll have to see. We're certainly not out of it. We did get that little bump at the end. Sure felt good, but boy, when you see it in context, it's just not that much. You know, we need, we need more. Uh, here's Lake Buchanan. Um, it got a bit more of a bump, as y'all know, but still not, not where it needs to be. And of course, we're back in a downward trend with the reservoirs. Um, you probably don't give a rat's ass about Canyon Lake. Uh, maybe do. Um, I, I put this up here because something is happening. Um, there's, you know, this is a severe drought that we're in. And Canyon Lake is almost assuredly in a new drought of record. Um, and talking to the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority that manages resources from that reservoir, you know, they think they're in, they're in a new drought of record. This analysis isn't done until you come out. Knock on wood, hopefully we come out at some point. Um, but, uh, you know, we're seeing, um, you know, the lowest flows in San Marcos Springs, which is right outside my office in San Marcos, um, since the 1950s. Record-low inflows to Canyon Lake. There's also increased usage of these reservoirs over time, but also affects those levels. Um, this is the, um, most recent U.S. drought monitor. It was updated this morning. You're gonna see a lot of stuff that's like hot off the press. I was like having to update my presentation all, all day today as new data came out. This is showing the, the U.S. drought monitor, and it's showing extreme drought in central Texas. Um, but, but I'm starting to think there's an issue with these U.S. drought monitors. Um, the, the monitor is pretty much based on rainfall data. Um, and generally looking at the three-month rainfall totals and where we're at in terms of percent of normal. Um, and, you know, John Nielsen Gammann, who's the state climatologist, who does a great job. I'm not criticizing him. Um, and he, sometimes he, um, kind of struggles because there's different flavors of drought. There's rainfall drought, um, there's water supply drought. You know, you can have a situation like we often have in the hill country where we go through a very long dry spell. We get, we get normal rains, but you just don't see inflows to the lakes that you should. So that would be a, this would be a water supply drought when maybe the precipitation or the rainfall drought is gone. Um, and there's other, like soil moisture droughts, agricultural droughts. There's all these different droughts. I think Dr. Gammann is trying to, with that red blotch there in the, kind of our part of the state, trying to show that, uh, you know, despite, um, rainfalls being better than they've been in the past, you know, we're still at near-record-low spring flows. It's San Marcos and Kamal Springs. Um, and that's not even accurate because, you know, where the, the flows come from for the aquifer are up in the hill country. Um, quite, quite a ways up into the hill country. And so there's something going on up there that's affecting those inflows. And it's the same story here because the hill country is also an important source of water. It's at the Highland Lakes. Um, this is, uh, so I'm showing the U.S. seasonal drought outlook. And, uh, and this was, um, released September 30th. I had a more recent one there, but maybe not. Um, and it's showing basically, again, you kind of see that little blob heading off into central Texas. I think that's an attempt to kind of reflect the drought that's in the Edwards Aquifer. But, you know, we're still, we're still in drought here with these water supplies here. And then they're showing drought development likely over much of the state. You know, there was some, a bunch of rain that fell, you know, kind of north of us, um, quite, you know, quite a ways, quite a ways north of the Colorado River over the last few months, which is why that's out of drought. But none of that water came down to benefit us. Um, so this is a different drought metric. And this is the Palmer Drought Severity Index. And rather than being dependent on rainfall, this is looking at soil moisture. And soil moisture is a function of rainfall, but also temperature, um, evaporation, and something called evapotranspiration. Basically plant sweat, you know, what the plants are taking up and putting back up into the atmosphere. Um, and, uh, this is chunkier than the, the data on the drought plan, but it's showing for a region, you know, severe drought or, or even extreme drought, which, which feels, um, more legit. Because it does boil down to soil moisture. Like if soil moisture's not good, we don't get runoff from rainfalls that fill the reservoirs or refill the aquifers. So, been some discussions on, uh, you know, maybe coming up with a better way of showing drought in Texas that tries to incorporate all these different flavors of drought because, you know, for policymakers, you know, they might look at, look at that drought monitor math and it's like, I mean, it's not great, but it doesn't look, doesn't look so bad, um, in the catchment for, uh, for the Highland Lakes. All right, this is, uh, I love these plots that LCRA puts out showing projections of combined storage of Lake Buchanan and Lake Travis. So, um, so the blue line on the left is actual October 2024 is the present. And then they're, basically it's kind of statistical projection. Um, it's not incorporating any climatic data. It's not incorporating El Nino, La Nina. It's just looking at what's happened in the past, looking at the statistics of what's happened in the past and projecting that forward. Um, so the, so you see four lines there. That bottom red line is for extreme conditions. So the 99th percentile, um, which would mean, um, you know, we'd be in the worst 1% drought conditions on record. The orange is showing the 90th. So, um, the worst 10% droughts, the median, 50% worse, 50% better. And then wet conditions, the 25th percentile. So, and they pretty much just look out, um, what, three months or so? It's actually a little more than that. Um, it's like six months, um, to just kind of show what happens. This is, this kind of, you know, keeps me from waking up in the middle of the night in a cold sweat wanting to fill my bathtub up with water, right? Because it's like, like, you know, I'm not gonna call it the worst condition, but that red line, it's like, you know, it's not, it's not great, but, but I don't have to get up in the middle of the night and fill up my bathtub. Neither do you. Um, so, so that's kind of what the, you know, what the futures might look like under, not quite worst-case scenario, but, but pretty awful-case scenarios here. Um, and I've got links on here, and I'm happy to share my slides and send those out. Those are all hyperlink, so you can click on them and pull up the latest information if you wanted. Um, so this is now showing what's, what's going on with El Nino, La Nina, or the El Nino Southern Oscillation. And so, and, uh, so this is, this is interesting because, um, we've been, we, we were in El Nino conditions, which is typically warmer and which we certainly were warmer, and wetter than normal. But we really didn't see a wet El Nino. And it isn't a guarantee. You know, it's like a 70 to 80% of the time in El Nino, we'll see wetter conditions. So unfortunately, you get that 20 to 30% of the time you're not. So I tell my wife, I speak probabilistically because it means it can never be wrong, right? She's like, you guarantee me 90% you'd be on time? I'm like, but 10% of the time, I wouldn't be. So, you know, if we did this 100 times, 10% of the time, I wouldn't be on time. This is one of those times. Um, so that's, that's how this works. There's no guarantees in this business, as y'all know. Um, and then we've been projected to go into La Nina conditions, which tends to be, um, drier than normal. And, uh, and so, uh, but, but as these, each month, I take a look at these, um, and I publish an article every month in Texas Plus Water Newsletter if you wanna, you know, get, see these every month, what's going on. Um, the, La Nina's are beginning weaker and weaker. So that, these lines have been pushing up. To be in El Nino conditions, you gotta be, have a temperature anomaly below that minus 0.5. So that purple line, which is an average of what's called dynamical models. So these are modical models, trying to model the physics of El Ninos and La Nina's. And then the green one is the average of statistical models. And statistical models are just looking for statistical relationships. And so statistical models really say we're not gonna go into La Nina. Um, the physical-based dynamical models suggest a very weak La Nina. And again, every month, these lines have been pushing up. So, uh, don't be surprised. Like, I wouldn't be surprised at this point if we find out, eh, we're not really going to go into. We might be in La Naba or neutral conditions. Um, so the NOAA and the Weather Service puts out these projections. And these, these came out like, like this afternoon, I think, kind of, you know, fresh off the press after I'd sent my revised, yet again revised presentation in. Um, and, uh, you know, and they got worse, so I had to show them to you. But, uh, these seasonal temperature outlooks, they're always, almost always above normal. I mean, it's, it's like, it's a rare surprise if one of these comes out and it shows that we're normal. Um, you know, and these, these averages are based on 30-year averages. And so normal conditions were really 15 years ago is what, what we're looking at. So, so again, we're just all, almost always warmer than normal. And that's not good because that increases evaporation. Evapotranspiration from plants decreases soil moisture, which decreases runoff to the rivers and the reservoirs and decreases refilling of our aquifers. Um, and then they also put out the, um, seasonal or winter projection for precipitation, and you can see for yourself. You know, it's, we're expected to be, um, a lot lower. And, you know, we certainly are there. It's been a long time since we've had rain in Austin. We have 35, 45 days now with no rain in sight. Um, you know, my wife and I don't water our yard. We have Xeriscaped. It's pretty crunchy right now. And we've got some new neighbors that bought the scrape next door to us. Um, and they're just like, what's going on with your yard? Well, because they've got like all nice new St. Augustine, which, which looks, looks gorgeous, but yeah. Psst, St. Augustine. Um, so this isn't, this isn't good news. But again, you know, there's, there's no guarantee that this is what's gonna happen. Um, but, but certainly the, the odds go that way. Um, so, so I'm not gonna say the words climate change. Oops, already did. But I wanna talk about warming. Um, this is showing Travis County average temperature. So, so there's a 1901 to 1975 mean of 67.1 degrees Fahrenheit. This is the average annual temperature, day, night, all seasons. And then what we've been seeing since 75. So, um, I've been in Austin since 91. It sure as heck feels a lot warmer now than it did back then. And then the data would support that. There is a link down here. If you get these slides, you can go check this out for yourself. It's a really neat tool. It was actually down for a bit because, uh, the, the place that puts these out is in Asheville. So it was like down for two weeks from, uh, the hurricane that came through, but it just came back up today, so. Um, and so, so this, this increasing temperature has consequences for our water resources. Um, and not only for attending ACL, since we had that, what, the latest 100-degree or more date during ACL over the weekend. Um, so, so this was some work that we did at the Meadow Center for Save Our Springs. And, uh, they were wanting to see what the relative contribution of water was from the Pertinalis compared to Barton and Onion Creeks. And so, um, Yipeng Zhang, who I worked with, he was at the Meadow Center at the time. He's now with Oklahoma State University. Um, we made these plots, and they're cumulative discharge or cumulative flow charts. And so, so what you do here is you get a, you know, there's a stream gauge that's measuring the flow from the river at point. And what we do is every day, we add, um, you know, today to the previous day's total, and we add the next day's total to the previous day's total. So it's a running sum of flow in the river. And the reason we do this is that if we just plotted the flows, you just get the spikes. It's kind of hard to see trends. But if you plot the data in this way, you can kind of look for changes in slope. Look at the Pertinalis. Do y'all see a change in slope there? Of course, I made it easy because I drew lines on it. So the fact that that's lower means there's less water coming down that, that river since about, I don't know, 2000, 2008. This is a little strange because it's like, it almost like it pivots, really. It's kind of, it goes up and then suddenly the slope changes. Um, but another way of looking at it is you could easily also just fit a curve to it, that there's this trending decrease in flow going down the river. Um, and this includes base flow as well as the flood flows that are coming down the river. Um, so, so that's, you know, we weren't looking for this when we did this plot, but filed this away. It's like, ah, what the hell is that about? That's interesting. What would cause that? Um, you know, there's a number of things. You know, the increased groundwater production could be decreasing spring flow and base flow to the river, thereby decreasing that slope. Um, I know LCRA has commissioned a study from one of my bosses, the chair of the Geography Department at Texas State, to look at the number of tanks or ponds going up over the landscape. So that, that could be part of it. Um, could also be the increasing temperatures as well causing, you know, lower soil moisture and decreased flows. Um, but anyways, I kind of filed that away as, okay, it'll be something interesting to look at at a later date. Um, this is showing all of the Highland Lake inflows from, and I did this plot. This is like, you know, you can smell it. It's fresh science. I did this, did this at the coffee shop down the street earlier. So I was like, I wonder what the long-term data looks like. Um, so this is showing cumulative inflows for all the Highland Lake inflows using the same gauging stations that LCRA uses to look at this. And, uh, and this is also showing a bending over. Now, there's some other stuff going on here. Um, and again, you know, there's like a lot of activity going on upstream. Makes it difficult to like point to one thing as the, the cause. Um, completely unrelated to this, I'm working with a graduate student looking at, um, the failure of Las Morris Springs in Bracketville, Texas. It's a spring like Barton Springs fed by the Edwards Aquifer. And, uh, and a lot of the recharge from that spring comes from the West New Oasis River. Made a similar plot, cumulative flow plot for the West New Oasis. I'll be damned, that thing's bending over. Um, there ain't a whole lot of development out in the West New Oasis River Basin. In fact, in fact, there's none. It's just the same old ranches that have been there for decades. Not a whole lot of groundwater pumping out there, but it's, it's gotten a lot warmer out there. Um, and so, so there's definitely, um, something going on. Uh, this is, this is a, a project that I'll be, you know, if I can find a graduate student, I can victimize doing a bunch of plots and looking at this. But, oh, and then I don't, I'm not showing it to you, but I was at the Starbucks down the road. I brought up, um, one of the upper-reach gauges on the Guadalupe. I'm, I'm, yeah, it's the Guadalupe. Same thing, it's bending over. Um, so, interesting. You know, this is, this is not just a catchment thing in the Highland Lakes or for the Highland Lakes. This is, this is something regional happening across the hill country, including in areas that have not had a bunch of new ponds or tanks built or don't have a big increase in groundwater. So, um, so think about that, because I certainly am. So where, where might we go? Um, it's very difficult to, very difficult to predict the weather through Christmas. It's very difficult to, very difficult to predict the weather through Christmas, let alone going out a hundred years. But, but this is what, I'm not saying this is going to happen because there's a bunch of things that could happen that would cause this thought to happen. It's really a matter of degree, pardon the pun, of how warm it's going to get. But, you know, one of the scenarios would suggest warming, you know, approaching ten degrees Fahrenheit. This is addition to those long-term annual averages. And then a decrease of rainfall of about one to five percent. And we'll see. These climate models don't do a good job in having consistent results on rainfall. In fact, a lot of folks should say, we don't know what's going to happen in the rainfall in Texas. State climatologist John Nielsen Gammann has shown that there's actually been a increase in statewide rainfall, a slight increase in addition to an increase in temperature across the state. Speaking of John Nielsen Gammann, this is a paper he published. I'm a co-author because I wrote about the groundwater side. But this is showing the Palmer drought severity index, so soil moisture. And that red line there and projecting out to the end of the century with one of the more severe scenarios of warming going forward. I've drawn, you see a dash, thick dash line underneath there is a thin red line. I added that thin red line because that's the bottom or the worst part of the drought of the fifties. And then this is what he's projecting on the Palmer drought severity index. This is not good. And this is for East Texas. I actually chose the less worst scenario since we're, we're right in the dividing line between East Texas and West Texas. Suggesting that, you know, probably what was the thick of the drought of record could be normal conditions and then there'll be droughts on top of that. So this is, this is something that worries me quite a bit when we talk about planning for the future. We have a little blog at the Meadow Center called Hotter Than Habanero. It used to be called Hotter Than a Jalapeno, but due to global warming, we raised the stakes there. Now, it was like a big office debate about, well, you know, some jalapenos aren't hot, you know? Not all jalapenos are hot, but all habaneros are hot. So, so we changed the name. Things I do for office politics. This is, this is kind of a neat thing. I don't know if you've all heard, you know, there's John Wesley Powell talked about the hundredth meridian. And it's the end of the humid east and the beginning of the arid west. And there's a lot of folks talking about, well, with the warming climate, the hundredth meridian is moving, moving east. And it's always kind of bothered me because, you know, the temperature increases, increase going south, not west. And rainfall decreases going west. And so with, with the projection showing constant rainfall, probably going to have the same amount of rainfall, but increasing temperatures, we really should be looking south. And so this is just a fun little exercise to look into that. I'll draw your attention to Austin. Now, these, these are the temperatures, the seventy, seventy-two, seventy-four, those are in Fahrenheit, just to confuse y'all. Hopefully, there's no Aggies in the room. The numbers in the circles are in Celsius. So there's Austin at zero with no warming. The thought is that Texas has probably warmed about one point five degrees Celsius. Roughly multiply that by two, three degrees Fahrenheit. So following the constant rainfall line south, that puts us halfway between San Antonio and Corpus Christi. That's, that's, that might be what our climate looks like now. And then based on the path we're going on now with warming, which isn't the worst path that I was talking about earlier, we're probably looking at two point four degrees Celsius of warming. Two point five, that puts us halfway between Corpus Christi and Brownsville. Not good. I don't know if y'all made that drive, but that's, that's not a good place to be. It's kind of interesting. Texarkana kind of heads on down to Houston. Probably not much of a change, but much more humid. In fact, warming does increase the humidity for every degree Celsius of warming, increases atmospheric moisture about seven percent. Amarillo is going to look more like Lubbock. I'm not sure you could hold me down, tickle me, and I could tell you the difference between those two towns. You know, St. Angelo is going to look more like Del Rio. That's kind of another one where it's like, I'm not sure you could really tell the difference. But, you know, Dallas, Fort Worth, at two point five is going to look like Corpus Christi. Wichita Falls will actually look more like San Antonio, which I would argue that's an improvement for Wichita Falls. That's why they all drive Suburbans up there. So, so this is interesting because, you know, it's like, like the feels like, looks like in East Texas where it's already really wet, probably not going to be much of a change. In the driest parts of the state, probably not going to be much of a change. But we're in the central part of the state, it's going to be some pretty substantial changes possibly, so. Okay, just a few more slides. There's a water plan at Madeline here. She's on the Austin, the Water Forward Task Force with me. I don't think there's any other members in the room. Where we're working on the one hundred year water plan for Austin that builds in climate change resilience. And in the current plan, it's, it's planning for a fifty percent reduction in the firm yield from Highland Lakes. So in other words, the maximum amount, whatever the maximum amount we can produce from the lake today, Austin's planning for half of that in a hundred years. So twenty-five percent less in fifty years, twelve and a half percent less in twelve years. So, you know, it's probably going down about half a percent a year in reliability, based, based on that projection that they've made. And, and employing a bunch of advanced water conservation approaches, as well as probably the big, big one is aquifer storage and recovery. Where they're going to take excess water under their permit for Colorado River water and store that into the Creeds of Wilcox and then pull that out at bad times. Phased in at thirty thousand acre feet, sixty thousand acre feet, and then a hundred, or ninety thousand acre feet. The, this plan is updated every five years. It's what Madeline and I are working on right now with a number of other folks on the committee. And that plan, I think it's supposed to be go in front of city council by the end of this year. It's happening pretty quick. So, so Austin's certainly taking this, taking, you know, concerns about Highland Lakes with, taking it seriously. You know, they're, they're coming up with different ways of doing things. Rainwater harvesting, condensate harvesting, you know, advanced metering, onsite wastewater treatment, a number, a number of cool things. However, that concreting that I mentioned to you earlier in this presentation is always, is at play here. Because it's like, yes, Austin's planning for a drought much worse than the drought of record. And so it's like, okay, if we plan for this and we have enough water for that, we're set. There is no guarantee that we're set. There's in the kind of climate change, water planning world, there's something called D M D U, a decision-making under deep uncertainty. We don't know exactly what's going to happen. And even what's, what's sometimes referred to as the worst case scenarios on these climate simulations, they're not worst case scenarios. Things can always be worse. I got quoted, actually, I think I got recorded by a television station when I was asked, is it possible for the Highland Lakes to go dry? And my response was yes. And I got a lot of crap to that from various people. But it is the only correct answer. I mean, to me, there's no hesitation, yes, it could go dry. Because we don't know what, exactly what's coming. And even if you set aside climate change and you just look at tree ring data on what has happened in the past, we could get hit with a drought that could completely drain these reservoirs. And so, you know, my opinion is, is folks do need to be thinking about, you know, what do we do when we reach a point that it looks like the lakes are going dry? Or even better, plan for, for that day in terms of what to do to make sure that we don't run out of water and that we, we can maintain lake levels. So unfortunately, it's not a popular thing to say. And, and this is not a criticism against what Austin's doing. I think it's fabulous, but I do worry. Like Austin is one community that uses that reservoir that's planning for climate change with that reservoir. No one else is. L C R A isn't. A lot of the other communities that rely on this resource are not. And that makes me wonder, it's like, okay, Austin's making these assumptions, but what are all these other folks going to do? So there's, there's still a great deal of uncertainty there. We should always be thinking about, you know, what happens when we lose? What would we do if we, if we lost the resource? I'm, I'm an accidental stoic. Because, because I always think about what's the worst thing that could happen? Which makes me enjoy at parties. But it's actually very, you know, it sounds like a very negative way to live. You're always thinking about what's the worst thing that could happen here? But it's actually, for me, it's, it's very releasing. Because if I've thought about that, what I would do, you know, one, it's kind of helped keep me doing the right thing in my life. Because if you get tempted to do a shortcut, you're like, what's the worst thing that could happen? It's like, well, I could be on K X A N saying that the lakes are going to go dry, you know? But, but if you, if you think about that, what you would do, then it's liberating. Because you're like, okay, well now I know what, what I'm going to do if that, if this happens or if that happens. So, and I wish, I wish more and more folks would do that. Not just accept that, oh, we've planned for the drought of record or we've planned for, you know, climate change. We're set, we're fine, we have nothing more to worry about. Unfortunately, that's not how the natural world works. So this is my catchphrase, plan for the worst, hope for the best, and expect to be surprised. So again, hopefully, everybody will, you know, remember and recognize the value of water. I know you all are going out and telling folks about this. And so keep doing that so people realize, you know, where their water comes from, which is here. They should be worried when they see the lakes get this low. And then doing everything they can to use water in the most efficient way going forward to ensure that all of us can enjoy water that sits in these reservoirs and in our aquifers. So thank you so much for your attention. Is there time for questions?
Can we hold questions? Is it very okay if we hold questions and I'll get through my slides real quick? Okay, and then we will open it up. Okay, I'm going to go to this side of the stage because I watched him watch that side of the stage. And I don't want to fall off. But can y'all see me okay? Okay, great. All right. So, we're going to talk about the state of the lakes. And I follow several of the slides that Robert had in his presentation or normally in my presentation. So there's going to be a little bit of overlap, but I tried to pull them and I promise we'll get y'all through this. So currently, we are in a drought. Regardless of what you see on K X A N, K view, whoever your news of choice is, not long ago, it showed, actually at an L C R A Water Ops meeting in the last two months, that we were not in drought. And now I saw Avery Tomasco say we're in a flash drought. That was new to me. I don't know, I may have that question for you later. But my yard now looks like what it used to look like in last August. So we had a later start to summer, right? We enjoyed June, July wasn't so bad. Oh my gosh, we're a hundred in October. That is not fun. So we still are in a drought regardless of what you see. And when you go to that drought index and you hover over your county, it doesn't always incorporate what our lakes look like. And that's one of the things that Region K, which is our regional planning group, we are looking at how do we incorporate? What do we build that can communicate to the public the actual status of our water supply rather than just relying on soil moisture? Because it's critical that people don't come out here from Austin and see Lake Travis. They really don't understand what it looks like. And that's, that's a problem because we've all got to conserve water during this time. So the official drought, this drought began in August of twenty nineteen. We are, it's important to remember that rain that we got, everybody's lawn was green this summer, which thought everybody, oh, that also was an indicator we were out of drought. That rain was fantastic for your yard. It did not do much for our lakes, especially Lake Travis, which normally benefits more from inflows, but we did not this time. So everything is different. And what I will say with, and reiterate what Robert said about La Niña, it's unpredictable. Every L C, I'm at every L C R A meeting. And every L C R A meeting when they said El Niño's here and we're planning for a flood, I'll say John Hoffman said, I'm going to plan for a drought, which was the smartest thing he could have said. La Niña is now upon us if it comes. And the problem is we just don't know. Like you said, that you're ten percent, you're going to be on time. The last La Niña lasted longer than it ever has in the past. We made it, no, it can't last more than three years. It did. So we just don't know. We have to plan smart because we don't know how long. That is our water supply. I was actually at the Capitol one day, day after the eclipse, and a couple came up to me and they asked me, what do you do? I said, well, I advocate for water. What do you do? Are you here for the eclipse? Oh, we're from Phoenix. We came out to the oasis. And I asked the waitress, is that your water supply? And she said, no. She works here. That's a problem. That's a problem. People have to understand this is your water supply. Most likely, if you happen to be on groundwater, you're probably not that much better off either. But it is important to us to educate people where your water comes from. So inflows that Robert was talking about, twenty twenty-two, during this drought, when we really saw everything hit the fan, this happened to be the year of the worst inflows of all of the record keeping in Texas. At this time, the, so let me explain this graph. Light blue line, historical average. Dark blue line is the drought of record, the two thousand eight to two thousand fifteen. And that purple line, that's actuals. That was twenty twenty-two, how much water we had flowing into our lakes. That year, at times, we were ten percent of historical average. We were at thirty percent of our drought of record. So that's really when our lakes started suffering. And that's also when you saw in the newspaper, ag has been cut off. Well, ag was cut off from releases except for one that gets water no matter what, Garwood. So they are always the thorn in our side. They had a full first crop this season because we got some rain. Well, they got it no matter what, but Garwood still took stored water. Twenty twenty-three, the next year, just last year, was the fourth worst in history. The really scary thing was last August. And that's when people started waking up. And that's when my lovely county commissioners came to L C R A with me because we got ninety-one acre feet in for the entire month. But the entire month of August, we were using, we were evaporating, we were releasing twenty-eight hundred to three thousand a day of water, of acre feet of water. There are three hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons in one acre foot of water. And we got one, we got ninety-one in for the entire month. That's frightening. We realized we really need to push this pause button. But at the same time, look at October. El Niño's here, it's starting to show up, and we all got excited that we got some rain. Well, here's twenty twenty-four. So I loved, somebody told me this week, El Niño gave us the drive-by. That's what we got. We got May, we got some more rain in June, we got a little in July, September, not so bad. But yet now all of a sudden, we're in a flash drought. And my yard looks awful. I'm sure all of y'all are having the crunchies that we normally have in August. But our lakes are dropping again. And now we are getting warmer, we're getting hotter. The forecast that came out today is concerning. We just don't know how long it's going to last. But I enjoyed my walk this morning. I hope y'all did too. It's going to be ninety in a few days again, so enjoy it. But the problem is these low inflows are really the crux of our concerns because these numbers of, we cannot plan to our historical past. It's just not accurate anymore. So we're advocating for better planning. Nine of the worst, nine of the ten of the worst inflow years have all occurred since two thousand and six. We know that some, there was a variable, we got O H I V. We don't know how much of that was affected. We know that we've got higher temperatures. We know evaporation is a factor. But nine out of ten have all occurred since two thousand and six. We also know we've had an exorbitant amount of growth. We've had a proliferation of ponds. But when I show you, this is one of our L R E slides, this actually puts it on the map since the beginning of our records. And now you can see the new trend. See if that little thing works. I don't know if my pointer's working, but you can see the new trend. That's what the nine out of ten says. So again, I'm going to say with Robert, climate change, ever-changing climate, whatever you want to call it, it's hotter, it's drier. We have a lot of contracts for water and not everybody is planning as well as City of Austin. So we've got it. So we've gotta do better with our planning. L C R A has gotta do better with their planning. So anybody can go look at this slide. All you have to do is, is literally Google Texas reservoirs and, uh, levels. And this will come up. And this is the state of our Texas reservoirs today. Literally, I pulled this today. Across the state, we're at 71.8%. It's interesting, this north, south, east, west is very interesting. But what we do know is, the reservoirs that are in the orange are showing the varying levels of how empty they are. And the blue are full or fuller. So our east side of the state, the reservoirs are in better shape than the west side of the state. We are starting to look a lot more like mid, uh, Abilene Midland area. They are drier, hotter, and we're gonna, I think we're gonna have to look to them a bit for the future for us. Because they operate under something called a safe yield, which we'll talk about. So we know that, um, the temperatures are hotter, we know it's lasting longer. Cannot believe it's almost Thanksgiving, uh, Halloween, and we're this hot. The other thing is these small ponds. So legislation was allowed, Cindy, 2013? Two, 2001? Okay, 2001, um, wildlife and fishing ponds all of a sudden became allowed. And you didn't just have to have a livestock, livestock exemption. You could have wildlife or fishing. And if it's on a non-nativable waterway, you don't even need a permit. So L C R A did a study on these small ponds. And we now know through drone footage, they've counted 44,000 ponds in our upper watershed. And that's probably a, a pretty, we don't know how accurate that is. That can change daily, that's gonna change based on how much water is in them. But we know that there's at least 44,000 ponds that are affecting our watershed and our inflows. All of those have to fill up before we get runoff to make it to our lakes. And one of, that's one of the things that we're targeting, because we've gotta get ahold of these inflows. Is this the new norm or the abnormal? Also, I don't know if people recognize, if in fact you are on Lake Travis or the Highland Lakes, it's an average of 70% of your water is going on your lawn. And that's your drinking water. So several people have come up to me with the new, if you know the drought contingency plans through your water providers. And they got more protective, um, recently in April. They all had to submit new drought contingency plans. And we, everybody had to switch to once a week watering. Well, then we got that rain. We went to twice a week watering. You can stick on once a week. Your water, your lawn adapted, it was okay. But going to twice a week watering again, just drops our lakes more quickly. If you want your faucet to come on, BK twice and about a month ago, um, and dripping springs drained their tanks overnight. People woke up to no water. Because they had irrigated all night. Cause when do you turn your sprinklers on? Two or three o'clock in the morning? Get up and turn on your faucet. Whoops. So we really need to focus on that. How much water does your lawn need? And is that really where you want your water to go? This is a Region K slide. Region K has done an analysis of the growth. I'm sure y'all have heard about the growth expected to Austin. So by 2080, they are projecting we are gonna have 4.5 million people living here. I will not be here when there's 4.5 million. It will be time to move. But coincidentally, guess how much water we need to go with that? We know that Senator Perry and people are working on new water supply. But that is a long-term goal, that we've gotta buy them time. How do we get there? Because we have a lot of people moving here. And people say, oh, but the population in Austin is dropping. Well, not really. They're going to Kyle, or they're going to Cedar Park. They're not necessarily leaving our area, they just may be leaving Austin proper. Also has a lot to do probably with property taxes and growth. It's crowded, I've heard that a lot. So we have to recognize that with the growth comes the need for more water. So we are getting, we've been working this last year. We're in an L C R A meeting. And one of the, um, board members said, we can only do what law and legislation allow us to do or require us to do. Well, that was my cue. Let's go figure out what laws and legislation need to change, so we can protect the water we have. We've been working with the legis, with our delegation in our region. We've had three meetings, I believe. Uh, we just met with them again yesterday. We started with 12 proposals, what would stick? Especially, we know this is gonna be a property owner rights session, we just keep hearing that. So what's gonna stick this session? And we also don't wanna get in the way of Senator Perry. Cause Senator Perry's going after new water, and that's fantastic. We need it. It's just not coming tomorrow. So the four things that held water, pardon the pun, um, that we're moving forward with. One of them being adding a citizen advisory council to all river authorities. What happens at L C R A is not only at L C R A. We read it all the time. River authorities get brought up under the sunset review. The problems are transparency, public engagement, and public trust. So we believe if we add a citizen, a citizen advisory council that can meet with L C R A regularly and see what that's gonna look like. We're working on what that's actually gonna flush out to look like. But it's, the goal is to increase transparency. So everybody has a, a voice, there's somebody there to represent us in the room. And has a voice. We want to remove barriers. There's this property code, Senate Bill 198 did this great thing. And said HOAs and POAs cannot prevent you from zero escaping or rainwater collection or, um, or drought native plants. Until this provision got added. Unless, thank you Dallas, you're an county that's over a million, a city that's over 100, under 175,000, or you happen to have, your, your homeowners association incorporates 4,000 acres. So how many people can that affect? Okay, Steiner Ranch, Big Barton Creek, Highland Park in Dallas. I mean, it's Harris County, Travis County, Tarrick County, Trav, um, Dallas County. All of our large counties fall under this, they're all over a million. They've absolutely got communities that are that large. And they are prohibited from zero escaping rainwater collection. And it is a big deal. We even still get called in communities that shouldn't fall in that, but their HOAs and POAs are trying to hold them to it. No, 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 your deed says you can't have brown grass. No, no, you can't use zero escaping, you've gotta plant that, that St. Augustine, the bad word. So we are trying to not only remove the barriers and encourage water conservation, but get the message out to people. It is your right. And, um, I work a lot with the Water District 17. And their general manager, Jason Homan, said, unfortunately, it's probably gonna come down to somebody suing their HOA or their POA. Because I get calls all the time, they're making me power wash my driveway. Are they allowed to do that? We have to call the water provider, the water provider has to call the president of the POA. And we try and work with them, but it's a problem. Nobody needs to be power washing your driveway when our lakes look like this. There's this thing at Lowe's, wet it and forget it. It's phenomenal. But we don't need to be power washing all the time. We don't, we need to keep our water in our lakes. And we need to make sure that people that want to rip up their St. Augustine and plant beautiful native landscape have the right to do it. That is a property owner right. We also want to register, we hoped to regulate the ponds, that is the next step. We're not going to get there, that, we may get, somebody else is taking up that fight. We are trying to at least get them registered. Because if we can get the ponds registered, we can understand how much water's in them. We can remove that number for our modeling purposes. And understand how much water do we actually have available to sell? How long does it have to last us? But as long as that water is counted in their current modeling, it's not accurate. So we're selling, I heard a word last month at L C R A that made me shudder. Well, I've got paper water. What is paper water? That's not gonna come out of my faucet. But that's how they're, they're starting to talk in those terms. Cause one day it's gonna turn into real water, but when is that one day? So we need to at least get these ponds registered. We need to understand the science, how much water do we actually have for this next water management plan? And with that, we are also encouraging, right now, I'm gonna try and not get too technical. And I think I can do it pretty high level. But there's something called a firm yield and a safe yield. Region K, which is all, all of us in this room live in Region K. Region K operates under a, a firm yield. Which means every available water, every available drop of water in our Highland Lakes is available for sale by, on a contract. They are selling us to zero. We used to have a 50,000 acre foot reserve, they've reduced it to 10. Without, nobody saw it go for a vote, we don't know when it happened. But even then, it's a funny number because it's not protected. And if we only have 10,000 acre feet of water left in our lakes, can you imagine the silt and where we're actually at at that point? But we have no protection. So if a region, there are six regions, there are 16 regions in the state. Six of them are operating under a safe yield. Which means they have a protected reserve. They are planning for the drought worse than the drought of record. And they have a six-month to a year water safety net, buffer. We've, and right now, for them to do that, they have to request a variance. There's a lot of paperwork that goes through that. We just wanna change it and remove that roadblock. Any region in this state that wants to operate and protect the water that they have and set up a reserve should be able to do that without having to do all of the red tape steps along the way. So I was very encouraged yesterday, that it seemed with the legislators, that we can pa, we can possibly get it passed if it, we, at this time, just allow them the opportunity. We'd love to say mandate, you have to have, you have to plan for the drought worse than the drought of record and have six months in the bank. What would we all do if we didn't have a savings account? Everybody in here probably has some sort of savings account. We have no savings account today. We need one. So at least if we let the regions, the regional planning group decide, hey, that's a good idea. Then they should be able to do that and not have to go through all the, the steps. From a water management plan perspective, the water management plan opens in March. It's gonna be a big deal. It's two years behind schedule, sort of. They were happening every five years. Um, it should have opened almost two years ago, it didn't. It's now opening in March. And we have some ideas, that things that need to change for that. A big one, when, in April, before we got that May rain, do you remember when you were at a restaurant and you had to request a glass of water? They couldn't bring you water? Um, that was just the beginning. If we hit 600, which is what they were projecting before the April rain, try and keep it over here. We were talking pro-raticer tail nut. We were talking 20% requirement of 20% reduction in water usage. We were getting in a really scary scenario. At 600,000 acre feet, we've got areas out of water. So we wanna raise that, that's a big deal. We'd like to raise it to 750. We want to have some sort, it's our own safety net. Why are we waiting until people are out of water to decide it's time to conserve water? We need to do that quicker instead of waiting to the last moment. Also, the trigger levels, the triggers for downstream releases. So if we fill up again, praying we do, if we fill up again, that we won't deplete so fast. Those triggers are important. We've, right now, um, if we hit 1.3 million acre feet combined storage again, which I, based on the forecast, I don't think that's happening. But had we, rice farmers in March were getting the decision date, they would get a first crop. That's a lot of water they'd be releasing downstream. We need to raise those levels and make sure that we have the water in the upper basin to make sure all of our faucets come on. We wanna build a protective reserve, as I was talking about, that can't be sold. They can't, right now, they call it a reserve, but they're still taking new contracts on it. Um, we want to incorporate the best available science. Those inflows have to be part of the model, because it's the new norm. Looking at the history doesn't help us. That's wishful thinking. We need to make sure that the most current data is incorporated into the plan. And they tell us they're gonna go through 2023, and that that's part of the reason for the delay. We hope that happens. We are counting on that happening. Um, but we need to make a plan based on this, I hate to call it the new normal, cause it's the new abnormal. It's hot, it's dry. Even according to Robert Mace, my, the big pedestal I put him on, it's not gonna rain! So not anytime soon, not the rains that we need. We need to have a plan that incorporates these low inflows, the high temperatures, and the addition of the small ponds. And we also have to look at environmental flows. If you've been in Austin a long time, and I know some of you have been, Austin was a lot of environmentalists. My first foray into water happened to be, um, volunteering with Save Our Springs back in 1994. So, and here I've come full circle in doing this. But it's hard to keep the environmental releases going when our lakes look the way they do. Austin's changing in many ways. It's great to go out and hike when you get some rain and you see the waters flowing. But that's not happening as often. And we know we've got the blue suckerfish, and we've got the things, the salamanders that we need to take care of. And now the new mussels and burnet, um, on Lake Buchanan. We just gotta determine how much water do we have for the environmental flows and make sure it's incorporated into the plan. So what can you do now? Reduce your, your watering on your yards is a big deal. We should be going into a time where you don't need to water anymore, but we'll see how long it's gonna stay hot. But reduce the amount of water, make sure that you're, if you're planting, and I love to plant, I love to get out in my gardens, plant things that only need to be watered once a week. They're the things that are gonna survive the most. Um, I don't know about y'all, but I did go to Lowe's and buy some plants that said, full sun, we're ready. Drought resistant, those suckers lasted a week. And, but, so be careful what you're planting and investing in. Watch the power washing, it's just really not necessary when our lakes are this low. Um, check for leaks. And I can attest that my mom got an email that said, you're using more water than normal. And she called me and said, I don't see a leak, call a plumber. That was my first answer to her, and that's my answer to you. Because if your water provider tells you you're using more water, you could have a slab leak like she did. There's water coming out of somewhere, they're not making it up. But if you get that email, make sure that you, um, follow up and see if you're possibly leaking water. We lose, Lake Way I know loses over 15% of its water just due to old infrastructure. Those are things we can't bypass, so we've gotta be aware of. If it's coming out of your home, make sure you take care of it. Um, register for Water Smart. And I actually, I have L C R A tools that they brought me, um, last time. So here's, they're up here for you to get. Water Smart will actually tell you how much water you're using, there's a ton of information there. Also, L C R A has great rebates. If you happen to be in their area, check for what rebates you can use. There's tools that you can put in your yard that I think are fascinating. And I know they're offered at City of Austin. But they'll tell you if your yard even needs to be watered. Because based on how much water your yard's holding. Right now, I know they all need it. But it's a good tool. This also, this card, the River Report is invaluable. You can see how much water, what the inflows are. You can register for it like I do, and wake up to that lovely news every morning. Zero! The number was zero for how much water we're getting in. But all of that's up here, if you wanna take it home. But it is important to be informed, so everybody understands where we are. And the last thing I'm gonna ask y'all, well, two things. One, everybody here, tell 10 friends, this is a problem. Everybody needs to understand we're in, we are in a drought and we're having issues. But also, sign up for our newsletter. Because when these bills, when it comes time, we may need letters. We may need people to come testify. We'll send out, um, a call to action. If you could sign up and then perhaps do that for us, that would be wonderful, because we are gonna need your help. Senator Perry said something I found so interesting and was ready to jump on board. He did his big opening at his last water committee session before the ledge opens. And he said, he is going to need loud but respectful voices. And that's something we can offer. Because he's gonna ask for $5 billion this session for new water. Plus a billion every year, so we can keep adding new water online. That's, but he's gonna add it to the Texas Water Fund on new water supply. It's coming in the future. Uh, the things that are coming, I'll tell you briefly, I didn't make a slide on. The number one thing, brackish water desal. Drilling, hoping there's water down there. And then how are we going to take the salt out of it and deliver it to you? Seawater desal. That's gonna be a lot more salt that's gotta come out of that water and treated. But that's also on the horizon. And then potentially buying water from other states. We've heard that for a couple of years. I learned something from Texas Water Development Board yesterday, I didn't know. In August, Missouri passed a law that they cannot sell water to another state. Well, we're looking to other states for water to pipe water. If other start passing those same laws, that may be a short-lived plan for Texas. So we're gonna have to embrace desal. But we've got to realize, there is only so much water going around. Um, and whether you're on groundwater or you're on surface water, it's water. And we're all suffering right now with these hot temperatures. So thank y'all for coming. We're happy to take questions, there is a mic set up right there. So Robert, if I could ask you to join me? And y'all are welcome to ask questions, but thank you so much for coming. And y'all are welcome to ask questions, but thank you so much for coming.
Any questions? There we go.
Hi, folks. Thanks for coming and giving us this great information. Um, I live out in the western part of the county at the mouth of the Purtinellis, uh, where the Two Rivers meet. And I'm sure y'all know very well, they're putting in just this gargantuan new development out there, building a new golf course, including the golf courses that are already there, which is Barton Creek Lakeside and Lake Cliff. But going up and down that road, Haney Flat Road, where we live, they're wa- putting an enormous amount of water on those new golf greens and golf fairways, 24/7. So that's firsthand evidence, what I see. And they're taking it, of course, right out of that lake. So the question is, when we get down to the point where we're going to have to do some really extreme rationing, what would that be? Uh, drought phase three or phase four, whatever?
When we hit stage two. We'll start, we'll start rationing at stage two.
Stage two. At what point do we try to convince those gated communities, if you will, to reduce that water irrigation to these golf courses as opposed to be more restrictive on residences out there? Is, is that going to be in the, in the works to where the more extreme users get the more extreme cutbacks? Is that possible?
We, we would love to, to work towards that. I, I know you're talking about Thomas Ranch. We have, we have met with them several times. We've also met with Lake Cliff. Like, we had our annual fundraiser last week at Lake Cliff, and they are water warriors. She pulled reductions, uh, I mean, if you, I drove out there just to, just to pick up our sign, um, the other day. And in a week, I can see how much drier it is. They've reduced their water usage. She's doing all the right things. And you look across the street at Thomas Ranch and, oh my gosh. And it's so frustrating. And they bought a community and they're doing everything they can. She's like, why am I going to conserve? She's not, she's dropped her usage by 40%, not required. She did it because she's a good person. And then across the street, she's got the Thomas Ranch folks saying, "Well, I need to put a golf course in and my contract says I can." So, and they bought that contract when we had water. So we're, we're in that with you and we're, that's on our list of things, but I don't have an answer for how. I agree, residents should get the water first before the golf courses. Um, I will tell you, Lake Cliff is also trans- transitioning to reuse water. So, but, do you have more?
Thank you.
Yeah, the, you know, this, this drought seems to have scared L C R A a little bit because, you know, for the first time, they're proposing these, you know, proportional reductions. And then I was at the Water Conservation Advisory Council meeting earlier today and, and visited after the meeting with someone from L C R A who's working directly with golf courses in terms of how much they need to cut back when, when we start seeing these proportional reductions. So, so L C R A staff at least recognizes like, it's not a good look to have a bunch of water going on golf courses when there's people that are having to, you know, cut back the usage perhaps in their, their households.
I will add to that too. L C R A, um, actually hired a, um, water planner. We, they've got somebody new on staff. We are very hopeful for this next water management plan. This last year, they've talked more about conservation than, I mean, I've been volunteering with C T W C for a long time. They didn't used to talk about conservation. As a matter of fact, a year ago, when we all went in there, they said, "We have plenty of water." Well, El Nino did not hit. So they are very focused on conservation. Yes, sir.
We had, we passed that, we passed that law that basically allowed, uh, people put in drought-resistant plants, essentially, I don't want to say ignoring what their HOA, but their POA says they have to do. But then it seems, sounds like they gutted it by adding this, this little add-on in the end. Um, what's the chances of that being res- taken back essentially in the next legislation?
The best news I got was Senator Perry's office said it will get a hearing. That's a big deal. He's not going to kill it in committee. He fully supports it. It is a property owner right. And I do think it has a real, that of all of our four bills, that I think has the best chance to survive. The important thing is going to be for people to stand up to their HOAs and point to Senate Bill 198, property code 202.007. And I'm going to say it, if y'all need help, reach out. I will help you, get you connected to the right people. But that subsection E, there's several things, um, that I think Representative Goodwin is doing a really good job. She's going to carry this bill on the House side. And there's some good changes that are going to come. And I think we'll make, I do think we will make some progress on this bill.
I had one other question too. You said 600,000 square acre feet, I think, uh, is our low level. Um, where are we at now?
I didn't look this morning, but I think we're under 800. I mean, under 900? We've drawn... Oh, 1-1 for, okay, 1-1 total. Combined storage. Yes. Okay, any other questions?
I just wanted to address the golf course. I live in Phoenix.
We want to make sure everybody can hear you. Thank you.
So I used to live in Phoenix and they have golf courses. And they just water the greens and they use gray water. So I know in the City of Austin, because I'm very familiar with that, um, that they do use gray water. I don't know where his location is, but that might be what they're using that you don't know about.
They're not. They're pulling from the lake and they dropped the line and it's bad. I won't sugarcoat it. They are pulling straight out of our lake. They actually, because they're supposed to be on the Purtinellis, it's dry. So they went another route and they're going through Lake Cliff because their contract allowed them to do. So they're pulling out of our lake.
And then I wanted to ask what you thought about Commissioner Agriculture, Sid Miller saying that we're running out of water. Did that make an effect with anybody?
I think it did. I really did, because people, when he come, I mean, he's controversial, right? It depends on what he says. But that's a big deal because people in our state are finally recognizing we have a, a water problem. And what we were told, Governor Abbott is not our water guy.
No, he's development.
But Wall Street reacted to Texas is running out of water. That mattered. That's what we're going to have to count on is things like that. So apparently, I've been told he's 99% a water guy now because he wants the economy in Austin and in Texas to continue to grow. And how is that going to grow with water? What do you ask?
Yeah, and I'd say Chairman Perry is kind of humming from the same hymn book in terms of, you know, deep concerns about what's, what's going on with water supplies. You know, Sid Miller is really concerned about agriculture. And so the Ogallala is drying up. Um, there's serious issues with the Rio Grande down in the Lower, Lower Grande Valley. And then one thing, one thing I learned from his editorial was, was, uh, you know, farmers in the Winter Garden area, the Creeds of Wilcox, um, south of San Antonio are having serious problems, which, which really that's fracking water. Water supply for frackings cause hundreds of foot of water level declines down there. So, so there's, there's truth to what he's saying. And, and, uh, and I think Chairman Perry is clearly the most powerful water person in the legislature right now. There's a gap on the House side, but he's, he's saying all the right things in terms of, yeah, I mean, he's looking, he's looking at everything at this point.
So I just wish he would have said that before Cedar Park approved that 46. The largest, um, swimming, oh, a pool, uh, they're in mineral water pools. They're going to have 46 pools, the largest in the United States in Cedar Park. And when they asked, Cedar Park's city council said to the developer, "Well, how much water do you think that's going to use?" And he said, "Oh, I think it's about as much as a fast food restaurant." And they went, "Oh, okay." So they've approved that. So I don't know how that happened, but it was on the news and I was like, what the? And so I called L C R A and I asked them, "What the heck's going on there?" I mean, they get the water from Lake Travis. He said, "Well, they get this amount of water and they can use it whatever they want." So they're looking at a developer from California rather than residents. So I don't know if even residents even knew about that. But it's kind of frustrating when you have something like that happen.
It is. And then the other big thing, and there was a, a hearing today, um, and B Cave. More of our...
I just came from there.
Okay, so Marisol Springs. Do we need a hotel at Hamilton Pool? I don't know. Where's the water going to come from? It's something that we have to consider. We have to plan very carefully right now. And if they have the contract for water, that's what L C R A is falling back on. If they have a contract for water and it's within their contract, then their hands are tied. They can't tell them that they have, they have to use it. Same thing that's happening with Thomas Ranch. Thomas Ranch actually had the most conservative contract L C R A had ever written. We got that directly from Stacy Pandy and she was very proud of the contract. The problem was when they got the contract for the water, our lakes filled up. Things changed. So then they took out some of the conservation that they had embedded into it, and now we're dealing with that.
So, and the last thing I wanted to mention was, um, I read in 2022, there were 6 billion gallons of water lost through leaky pipes in the City of Austin. So now the newest, new one is, um, 22 gallons per resident per day. So if you, there's, uh, multiplied by, by the residents we have, that's, uh, seven, eight million gallons that we lose from leaky pipes. And I don't know what, I'm sorry, billion. Sorry, yes, billion, thank you. Yes, billion. It's even hard to say, billion.
And I think it's, I think it's higher than that, like six, 50, 60 gallons per person, per connection, or per connection. Yeah. Um, yeah, so, so Madeline and I are, we're on that committee working on that 100-year water plan, but we're also getting to review, um, water conservation plan, drought contingency plan. And then, and then just our recent meeting, um, heard about the, the water loss. And so, um, so Austin is, you know, they, they hired a consultant to kind of help them look at the situation. Um, looks like the city's going to invest money in decreasing that water loss. It's, it's gone up, um, interestingly enough, over the last 10 years. It's a little unclear why. I mean, talking, talking to Stacy Pandy earlier today and kind of seeing data on all kinds of water committees from other parts of the state, it's like, it's kind of a consistent thing across the state, which has me wondering if the better metering infrastructure we have now is giving us a better understanding of where water is going and it's kind of moving water to water loss. But, but, um, but the city seems pretty committed to, to decrease that, that water loss over time. Yeah, I was shocked, you know, there was a report that came out, I think it's called, what, it's called Hidden Reservoirs or something, um, talking about water loss across the, the state. I'd never seen the number presented on a per connection basis. And it was, it was a bit shocking. I think statewide, it's 51 gallons per connection a day. And my wife and I use about 70 gallons together a day. Um, so, so it's like, it was like, holy cow. You know, that's, most of the water we use is lost before it gets to our house. Um, so that, that's a bit despondent. I've seen, you know, on that cesspool called Next Door, I've seen some, I've seen some posts where folks are like, "Well, if the city's losing that much water, why the hell am I conserving water?" So don't, don't take that the wrong way. Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. Texas Water Fund added wat- added money to help support reducing water loss. And that, that report that got put out really helped focus the discussion in the last session. And I'm sure it's going to, going to continue. And, yep, and again, Charles Perry is working hard to provide billions of dollars to help the state, you know, solve its water problems going forward.
I'm sorry, I lied. I have one more thing. So Kevin Kluge from Austin Water, he, uh, he announced on TV that with restrictions two, we haven't saved any water. So I wrote to him and I said, "We need to redo restrictions two and we need to advertise like ERCOT advertised when they needed power, like every two minutes, you got to notice." And also have it in schools that we have a class on how to teach your parents to save water because it's really hard to break a habit. And everybody's got the habit of letting the water run with a brush in their teeth. And I even said, "Get the water." I have a, a hot water recirculating pump on my hot water tank. And so you, it's hot water and you save 1,500 gallons a month. But they said, "Oh, no, we don't want to do that." So I'm always trying, but that's in my last thing. Thanks.
Yeah, that's, that's great. You know, that, that issue is not unique to Austin, unfortunately. There's, uh, you know, and I think what's hap- there's, there's kind of a good part to this story of what's happening, that, that Texans have done much better in being efficient with water use. So after that 2008, 2015 drought, Austin went on a permanent, once a week watering schedule. And the thing is, is like, it doesn't really escalate much beyond that when we go in the drought these days. And so, so in the old days, it used to be you had high water use. You went in the drought, you saw the, the, yeah, you saw a reduction. These days, folks are, are from the get-go using less water and the drought comes and now they're using more water because they see their three yards drying up. Um, but, uh, but I know Mad- Madeline and I and others have been asking those questions of like, yeah, you need to, because I, because I don't think anybody knows in Austin that there's, there's a drought going on. Some people do, but a lot of people don't. Because we've had this, yeah, you see Lady Bird, you see this green drought. And even the map that you showed, showing this Highland Lakes, you know, there's what, three or four, um, nobody from L C R A is here, right? Constant level lakes, right? They're always full. So, so it looks great, but, but those lakes are designed to, to stay at that level. Uh-oh, the commission is here.
I have a, a question and a comment. Um, the, as we get hotter and drier, um, my understanding is that, um, as the ground cracks and shifts, that that also has an impact on breaking water lines? Is that something that y'all are looking at on the, on the city's water plan or you can comment on? Because that seems to be making the situation worse.
Um, you're absolutely right. Um, particularly these clay soils and, I mean, like, like our house in Allendale, there's a, well, you live in Allendale, right? There's like a two-inch underneath our catio, which is attached to the top of our, overhang of our house. You know, when it's dry, there's a two to three inch gap. Then when it rains, it kind of seals up, so.
Our house is older, it's on pier and beam.
Okay, yeah, so you're like a roller coaster. They're, they're looking at that, but I'm forgetting the details of it. But, but that is, that is part of it. You know, and they showed data on the water loss. Um, it was a little, it was a little perplexing because it's, because they seem like there, maybe there were actually less, less breaks, um, while at the same time, they were seeing an increase in loss. Um, but, but that is certainly part of it.
Yeah. Um, one of the things that we're doing at the county, and, um, this could be on your list of what people can do, is, um, using Purple Pipe. And that's taking treated wastewater that's treated to a level that it can be discharged downstream in the Colorado River and piping it to high-use areas so that people can use it as the replacement water supply for, um, activities in buildings that use a lot of water. And the thing that most people don't know is a larger building like this, for instance, 90% of the water use in a building like this is for air conditioning. And nobody drinks the air conditioning water supply. So you can easily swap out and use Purple Pipe. And that's what we did at the county. We swapped out the water supply on five of our older, larger buildings in the downtown area and our jail. And when we finally hook up the new courthouse at 17th and Guadalupe and the probate building, we'll be permanently eliminating the demand for 45 million gallons of water a year. It's not on a daily basis, but it all adds up. And there's a, an effort underway, so this might be one of the things to add to your legislative agenda, to get the state capitol to hook up to Austin's Purple Pipeline. The state capitol with the expanded, uh, buildings that they've added that now go all the way up to MLK Boulevard from Eleventh Street, I think has to be using close to a billion gallons of water. Much of it for air conditioning, again, ninety percent, another percentage for irrigation, neither of which have to be treated to drinking water standards. And the city of Austin has ample water for reuse. The city of San Antonio uses one hundred percent of its treated wastewater. City of Austin uses, what, three percent? It's a small percentage. So there's a whole lot more opportunity to swap out treated drinking water, which comes out of Lake Travis. And the water comes out of Lake Travis, then gets treated and use treated wastewater instead for non-drinking water purposes. So I'd add that to the list of things that people can do. Because all little small towns around here can switch to those kinds of things too if they have a wastewater treatment plant.
And some other cool things that could be done is that Austin has some some demonstration projects, like like using the built environment as a source of water. So rainwater harvesting, you know, AC condensate harvesting, stormwater harvesting. And you can even do onsite wastewater treatment. So like the new library downtown Austin collects rainwater, collects AC condensate and uses that for onsite irrigation, flushing toilets and urinals. And they're able to reduce their use of Colorado River water by ninety percent. And then there's the new permitting building, which rainwater harvesting, condensate harvesting. And they have the cutest little wastewater treatment plant you've ever seen. I bawled during the grand opening. It's so adorable. And and it's publicly available. I highly encourage you to go check it out. Doesn't smell like turds. But it's adorable. Yeah, it's it's just beautifully done. It's fantastic. If I'd have seen that when I was like younger, I might have become an environmental engineer and done wastewater treatment because it's so inspiring.
I always like to say that HOAs have all of the bad aspects of socialism with absolutely none of the benefits. And and when I when I worked for Austin M.G. Green Building, we actually reviewed some some HOA agreements. One of them for Mueller redevelopment. And what they did, they just took old seventies era boilerplate language. And that's what they were using for for all their requirements. So so it's basically you got to water, you know, keep all the lawns green. You got all the landscaping, just, you know, terrible outdated stuff. And we 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 required them, the city required them to throw it out. And basically, you know, so Mueller turned out to be pretty good. But Robert, one thing that struck me recently as I was watching local weather forecast, because I've been in Austin thirty-six years or so. We in the summer, we used to get basically golf influenced showers in the summer. And we don't get those anymore. Or if we do, they're very, very rare. Or do y'all see that in your data, you know, that you're working with?
I haven't specifically looked for that, but but I will now that you mentioned it. But yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, I mean, summers are always hot and dry. But they didn't used to be as hot and as dry, at least in this. And sometimes the sea, you know, those seabreeze showers wouldn't make it all the way up to us. They'd make maybe make it to New Bronfels and then kind of quit or San Marcos. But sometimes they they move on up and hit Austin, but man, we just don't see them anymore.
And these droughts can be self-reinforcing. And so, you know, they just kind of help create this high pressure system, heat dome that, you know, just kind of pushes the weather systems away. I, you know, I often through most of my career have said, hey, we need to hope for a mellow tropical system to save the day. And earlier this year, I thought, what are the odds? You know, I've never really calculated the odds. So so I did a cheese ball. I'll find a graduate student victimized at some point to do it more accurately. But but there's less in any given year, there's less than a two percent chance that we're going to see a tropical system come over any part of central Texas.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I mean, it'll come at some point. Hopefully not as bad as Helene, but yeah, it's not it's not likely.
Yeah. By the way, on on leakage rates, I don't know if that was untreated water or treated water that Austin's seeing.
Treated water.
It's treated water. But when I was at the Capitol and everything was going on with San Antonio and the, you know, establishment of the Evans Aquifer Authority, San Antonio was seeing about a thirty-five percent loss rate on water that they were withdrawing from the aquifer. So they improved that a lot. You know, when I was doing water stuff with Texas Parks and Wildlife, I think sixteen or fifteen or sixteen percent loss was actually considered pretty darn good. So anyway.
Last question.
So I'll probably be labeled as a conspiracy theorist. But I know that the state of Tennessee has done some legislation as far as weather modification is concerned. And I've heard that ten other states have started proceedings, you know, for some kind of weather modification bills to stop cloud seeding and things like that. And I've heard that there's been studies that that is what's causing the West to be so dry and the East Coast to be, you know, having all of this flooding. So I was wondering what your thoughts are on that.
So, yeah, so I somewhat follow the weather modification subculture. And then is that a me question? And when I was at the Water Development Board, you know, that it kind of popped up about, you know, is it working or is it not working? So I spent some time looking at it there. The physics are there for, you know, seeding a cloud and causing it to rain or rain more intensely. So so the physics are all there. What's been a struggle is actually showing and proving that it's actually increased rainfall.
What I've heard is that it's it's causing more problems because it's adding aluminum into the atmosphere, which is diverting water from forming, condensation from forming in the Western United States and moving it all to the Eastern United States. And that's why they're flooding all the time and were in this drought.
Yeah, I would say there's not enough of it to do that. And then the effect it's having is pretty small where it where it's occurring. There's a recent study that came out of Colorado that seems to be the first that I believe in that shows statistically that there's an increase in rainfall. But it's but it's relatively minor. Now, there's been folks in Texas doing it for decades. There's a groundwater district in the Panhandle that's been doing it. And and there were some downstream folks or downwind folks concerned that the district was stealing their water. But but if you look at the amount of moisture that's in the atmosphere and how limited it is when you seed a cloud, it's like you're picking one cloud out of a bunch. The impacts are minimal to none. There is statistical, good statistical proof that it reduces hail. So you'll see folks cloud seed to minimize hail damage on crops. But Chinese are really big into it. The Russians has done a lot of work in it. But there's there's nothing that I've seen that that supports what you're suggesting. I won't call you a conspiracy theorist.
I just see a lot of crisscrossing in the skies these days and I kind of wonder, you know, what that is.
It is one thing I'll say is like, you know, because it does, like rain does need something, the raindrops need something to grab onto, which is what you're doing when you're seeding a cloud. Air pollution does that. And so decreasing air pollution might be decreasing rainfall. And it's actually making the planet warmer because those particulates reflect solar radiation. So as we decrease, it's kind of kind of a cruel reality. But as we decrease air pollution, we're actually warming the climate a little bit, so. Thanks, thanks so much.
Thank you all so much for coming. We really appreciate it. If you'd like to see the presentation, reach out. I'm happy to send it to you. Thank you so much. This was such a honor. Sorry, I don't mean to do that to you. Such an honor. I appreciate it. I appreciate all of y'all's time. If you have any questions, reach out. We are a nonprofit. We could use your support and thank you so much.